Welcome, beloved. Good to see you.
Okay, well, let's start with you introducing yourselves and then let's dive in. I was giving folks a little bit of background on the state federal funding while y'all was jumping on. But let's backtrack and say, welcome to Monday Mills. So let's start with Cory. Why don't you introduce yourself? Tell people who you are.
Okay, good afternoon. I'm so happy to be here talking with you. I work closely with Cynthia. I have a lot of respect for the work that you do, Pacolia. You know, we've been in community for a long time. So I am an educator in Oakland. I have taught in Oakland High Schools, alternative and comprehensive for over 15 years. My background is in special education. I'm also co-chair of the Community Advisory Committee, which is a committee made up of parents and community members who want to be involved in our concern with how money is spent and what the focus is. And CAC specifically, we focus on our disabled students in OUSD. And I'm also a parent of Nova, who is a student in OUSD. She's a sophomore at Castlemont High School and also has a disability. So my main focus as an educator in Oakland is around lifting up the issues and the priorities for all disabled students in Oakland Unified School District.
Yeah. So, well, how was your weekend? Because it's been a crazy week in California. But how was your weekend?
My weekend was great. Nova, actually, my daughter, who I was mentioning, she dances with a Filipino folk group in Oakland called Agos. And they had their performance today at the Asian Cultural Center. I mean, they had it yesterday, and it's something they've been working on for six months. And Rachel Lada's daughter also is in this dance room. A lot of people don't know Rachel Lada is Filipino. She's our District One member, representative. And so it was like a lot of getting ready, and then there was a lot of celebration. And as far as like inclusion, right? Like, this is a community organization centered around Philippine culture. And so Nova, who has Down Syndrome, you know, they don't treat her differently. There's such a stark difference between inclusion in OUSD and inclusion in community. And so thankfully, we have this experience to inform Nova's sense of like, this is what it feels like to be included.
Thanks for sharing. How was your weekend, Cynthia?
Oh, you can hear me. No double feed. Thank you, Pacolia. I can't explain what was happening, so I'm glad to be here. I'm very happy to be in the mass protest this Saturday. That was really the highlight of the weekend. Otherwise, I'm happy to wrap up a very eventful last week of work with presentations to the school board, celebrations of parent leaders, and our Office of Equity moving out of their current location. So very intense week.
That sounds like.
Thanks for asking. It was a lot.
Well, I appreciate you. You know, for me, it was my youngest son's birthday. And so we are 10 officially and spent the weekend just doing all the family things. I think I actually finally have mastered at 22 years of being a parent, doing a birthday party with budget and not stressed out. It's so, I'm very excited to have given him, he said, "This was the best birthday ever." And it was just literally like, it came over and played. It was like, oh, that's all it, no extravagant inflatables or, you know, nothing. It was just balloons and party, and it was great. So sad to have missed the protest, but happy to have prioritized my son. Because those of you who know, I've spent a lot of my parenting time in meetings and not necessarily being the best that I can be in comparison. So it felt really good to prioritize him for this weekend. It also made me really happy to call Oakland home. I think often, you know, especially in our community, we have so many folks that we love and cherish that we don't get to see, very frankly, on a regular basis. And it was just nice to have like, my folks come home to my home and just chill. And like, we art in Drew and had a good old time drinking water. Thought that was gonna turn. See how y'all, see all y'all nodding.
Stay hydrated. Stay hydrated.
We drank water.
Yeah.
But you know, I love Oakland for that, you know, the diversity. We got all kinds of folks over. But why do you all call Oakland home? And you know, what makes you love this city so much that you advocate for our kids?
I'll go first, Cynthia. Well, Oakland has been home for a long time. I grew up up in the Emerald Triangle of Mendocino County. And my mom was very connected to a man named Edsel Matthews, who ran Jazz Club down here at the Alice Arts Center. We knew that as the Alice Arts Center. So I've always been in Oakland from a child, and then I moved down to the Bay Area. I've always wanted to be a teacher. And so when I started teaching in Oakland at Far West High School, which was a small arts magnet high school where the upper campus of Oakland Tech is now, we got a lot of the students were, and still are, in their, now they're in their 30s, very alternative, like the black skater kids who wore eyeliner and nail polish. They were doing all that before. It was like, really as accepted as it is today. Those kids went to Far West High School. And for me, having worked with young people in Oakland for over 15 years and having my own children go through the public school system and raising them here, I think that I just have so much respect and I'm in awe of young people in Oakland. They are hilarious. They're intelligent. They keep me honest. Influences the world time and time again. Like, that's just facts. You know, it's not like, "Oh, I'm repping my city." It literally is factual. Many times, a worldwide trend, it traces back to Oakland. The roots come back to Oakland. And just still, you know, I love the people in this city. Having also grown up up in Mendocino County in Willets, where there is an indigenous population, and there's also, there's always been like Mexican folks up there. And people assumed I was Mexican, me and my mom, but we're not. We're mixed Filipino. And there were no other Filipinos up there at the time. Coming down to the Bay Area, where there was established black culture, brown culture, Asian culture, it just really felt like, up for me, when I was a teenager, when I moved down here permanently, I was like, this is where I need to be. And today, I really, I mean, every day, I'm like, yeah, this is where I need to be. Because I feel safer here.
What a contrary to the mainstream conversation, right? I say, isn't it contrary to the, right?
Right, right.
We feel safe being around more diversity, whereas they claim that diversity isn't safe.
Absolutely, absolutely. And now that I have a daughter with a disability, also the support and community that surrounds her here. I'm invested in the community in Oakland very deep, like so much so that like, I would, I wouldn't, I have not left Oakland for relationships. You know what I'm saying? People wanted to move, and I was like, bye.
Ain't going nowhere.
Good luck with that. So anyway, just very invested in the community and have a lot and feel very honored to work with the young people, particularly the teenagers in Oakland.
Yeah, thank you. I'm glad to hear about your history with Far West, because most folks don't know about what that North Campus was before. Awesome. Well, Cynthia, what about you?
Oh, it's always hard to figure out where to start. So, everybody, I am from, and by the way, I've never gotten used to looking at the camera. So just know I'll be doing that thing. I don't think I ever will. But so I'm from Boricua, from Puerto Rico. And it's a very interesting journey, because I went from there to Iowa, from Iowa to Arizona. And then when I was in Arizona, I had a counselor who encouraged me to apply to UC Berkeley for their African Diaspora Studies Program in the African American Studies Department. I am an African identified, Black identified Boricua, not always understood as such, and was so excited that I could go, like, be in the middle of that conversation. And back then, I did not know that, you know, quickly, I moved from Berkeley. Like, I landed there in the summer and went straight to Oakland, because I didn't, I felt comfortable in Oakland. So, and that was back in 1998. So, woo, that's way back, 2009, Prop 54, all those props, you know. I was Prop 21. I was a student organizer, ethnic studies, African American studies, pushing against all that. So I had my son in 2004 took a leave from my PhD program. I'm still on that leave. So, this is, yeah, this is the, this is, and in my leave, I was bartending, trying to survive as a single mom. And the person of the design team for Rise Community School was at the bar. And I was talking to somebody about what I do, coalitional politics, and lots of air quotes between Latino and Black, you know? And grassroots coalitional politics between Latino and Black communities, particularly in schools, you know, and how I fit in for the stories that I tell, to make meaning and to bridge, you know? So, and he recruited me out of a bar to work at Rise Community School. I've worked in Oakland Unified since 2005, in schools, specifically like individual schools. And that's how I got to know Oakland deep. I've worked in United for Success and ICS and with Men's Nita Seed and Community and with Rise and New Highland and, but I'm in so many schools that I've gotten to know many communities. Oakland brings together who I am. I can find a strong Black politic. I can find a sense of an anti-colonial identity with Chicano, Mexicano, indigenous folks. I can find a spiritual home, because I follow an indigenous spiritual tradition. I can find strong class politic. I can find disability justice organizers like Sins Invalid. I can bring together who I am and be with people who know that organizing starts with small actions with neighbors, that you seed the big things through the small things. So, and of course, my current job webs me, because the work that I do is to see each other across neighborhoods, across communities, and see schools as the sites of community across our city. So, yeah, I do sacred work, and I'm very grateful to do it.
Yeah. I appreciate you both for just that richness of history. And I think also the ways in which you both highlight how Oakland brings your best identities forward, right? And I think one of the reasons why, in, you know, asking you both to come on and talk about the budget, is not because I think we're all experts on the budget, because I think we're all learners, we'll probably be learners in our gray hair days of the budget.
I have hair. Your hair has just, you know, nicely died.
But I do think that, like, we've all collectively, as parents, as educators, as folks who love this district and love the students in this district, have learned some things, right? But we've also been in these processes as advocates, seeing kind of what is kind of the best of the process and the worst of the process. As I was explaining to folks before, you know, the district budget is supposed to represent how we best serve our students, right? It's supposed to be this amazing values-led document with a bunch of numbers. And then it's also supposed to be a company document called the Local Control Accountability Plan that kind of tells you like, this is what is behind all the numbers, right? And I try to start us on that framework, because we know that the state funding is being decided. We know the federal funding is being decided every year, right? And that every district has to pass a budget by June 30th. But the how you get to June 30th, from the beginning of the school year to June 30, is very different across every district. And I can really say that there is no similarities. Even here in the Bay, on like, how students, how parents, how different communities within districts are engaged, to really identify what they need to create. You know, let's just take OUSD's goals, joyful learning, academic success, right? Safe neighborhood, you know, neighborhood schools, or even just safe schools. Because some folks don't want to go to their neighborhood school for a lot of different reasons. High-quality programs for students across the whole district, right? So the budget is supposed to give us a sense of, where are all the tax-paying dollars that flow into OUSD? Where are they going toward those things? And what are the deficits that we're just not going to ever be able to fund? And the responsibility of the board, I think is important to highlight first, is to just make sure there is a process designed, that people know, hey, this is what we're expecting from the superintendent, to get us to a transparent process where we feel comfortable passing and voting on a budget by June 30. And that's kind of the beginning and the end. The board really can and only does say yes or no to the final budget document. They can give direction to the superintendent on what the superintendent can do with regards to what kind of proposals they want to see in the budget. But I think one thing that I want to start off with, demystifying, is that the board is all of a sudden aware of every number in the budget. No people. That's not true. The actual individual, and there's only one individual in the system who is absolutely in charge of the budget, is the superintendent. And I think that that's something that's very, very important for us to get very clear across. Because I think even sometimes in the city budget process, folks are like, well, the mayor is in charge of the budget. Because you understand the mayor presents the budget to council, and then council decides to amend it, right? Well, it's the same thing in the school district. The superintendent presents a budget to the board, and the board either decides to go with it or amended by giving the superintendent direction. And so I do want to, like, offer that as like our framework. The superintendent implements a budget process. They direct the departments. They direct the school sites. They direct the different ways in which money flows. And then they pull all of that into a budget proposal that goes to the school board. And actually, our budget proposal for the school board just went to the school board last Wednesday, as well as the LCAP, again, that document that tells all the goals and how the budget is supposed to be reaching that. So that's the high level of the budget process. But, you know, you've both been involved in OUSD over the years in different levels of budget development. Tell us, what does it look like at a school site? Because I think a lot of folks don't know what budget development means at the school site level.
That's a little more down your lane, Coriander.
I'm gonna pull over again. Yeah, okay. So, of course, there's the SSC, right? Team that decides at the site level how the money for that year will be spent, the budget for that year, and then projects into what it will look like next year. And a lot of times, my experience has been, it's been very hard, especially in high schools, to get parents to join the SSC, because it means going to a meeting during dinnertime, you know, when you're already tired, you just got home from work and like, picked up all your kids. I'm dropping my kid off right now, by the way. So, there's a lot of power in the SSC, and I encourage people to get involved with the SSC. Their side, if they want to help decide how money is spent. And then we work on our own, like, SPSA's, where you are also under the umbrella that's given by the district. We're saying, this is how we're going to address this at the site, and this is what this will look like. And this is how we addressed it last year. Bye, Nova. Love you.
That's called the most tasky. That's that mama thing.
Yeah. She's doing a dope internship at KDL this summer.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. So, we work really hard on the, like, if you, people take it seriously. There's people, and the people that I work with at Dewey Academy, I love my team. I love my principal. I love my CS. Like, we are a great team. And that's not true at every school site. Who genuinely, they're like, let's address these, let's also lift up what our need is that maybe isn't being addressed because of this top-down, like, the way that we've been given the information and what we're supposed to be spending, and like, you know, positions are being like, taken away from us last minute, that we really need, especially at a school like Dewey, that's an alternative ed school, that needs, hold on, Nova's locked out, that needs, we need extra case management and extra support. So, I see that, you know, we send all this good information, in my experience, from the communities I've been part of, to back to the district, and they just change things last minute. And it's like, it's almost like, they don't care what we're asking for, because they're going to do what they're going to do anyway. So that's my.
Yeah, yeah. I bet you that is. So let me just make sure.
I'm gonna trouble that a tad, Coriander, if Pacolia will let me. I know you wanted to do something right now.
No, it's all good. I was just gonna, just quickly say, SSC stands for a School Site Council. And then Cory mentioned SPSA, which stands for Single Plan for Student Achievement. So I just wanted to give people those terms, because I think we use it all the time, so we don't always say what they mean. But go ahead, Cynthia. Take it away.
So, I think you and I, Pacolia, have been in this conversation at the district level long enough to understand that Oakland Unified is unique in this whole school-based decision-making thing, right? So there is this preference historically to send as many dollars as possible to school sites, which is very different than sending a resource, let's say, a position to a school site. And to have school sites make decisions about how to use those dollars. I happen to be a person who, back in 2012, opposed that as a chair of the CAC. This whole idea of quote-quote "results-based budgeting", which is basically, we don't centrally allocate things to sites. We send the dollars, and then they decide at the site level how to use them. And that came in at a time when there was this notion of like entrepreneurial principles, you know, and schools competing against each other, and here's your money, do the best you can with it, you know? So very different times, too, because there were many more dollars and many more students than we have now. So, being centralized is not the same as being top-down. So, I do believe in a more, back then and now, in a more centralized way of deciding how resources get dispersed across our district. So, that means that in doing so, we can be aware of a school that has 200 kids versus one that has 800, for example. And the challenges that are different. We can be aware of a school that has 35% students attending, with IEPs, and mostly attending SDCs, like a grass valley, and schools that do not have any of them. Or we can be aware of schools that have not been invested in historically, and schools that have, who cannot attract as many students. So I do, I think that we have been told that site-based decision-making is better. And I believe in highly democratic, centralized decision-making, which means that school sites send representatives who are strong to a centralized conversation, where we can understand the formulas, unset them, and the criteria, kind of like the rules of how we do things, of who gets what and how. And we are becoming more centralized, often because there's less. So, if you cannot fund, for example, a dip substitute, a kind of permanent-type substitute at a site for every single school, and that's what people like to do, and then they were doing one year, 1%, and then they would fund 0.8 of that person, and then 0.5 of that person, and then 0.2 of that person, because the money's going down, right? Or the source of dollars is now different, and there's different rules. We gotta bring that together into a conversation of how do we do that across our city? You know? So, I think site-based budgeting has really endangered our solidarity. It has really disadvantaged populations of students that have the most intensive needs. It has pitted schools against each other. And at a time when there are schools that are predictably the smallest and most vulnerable, we need to have a more centralized conversation about what to do. So, that's my take on that. So centralized does not mean top-down, and centralized does not mean administrators only.
Yeah. So you brought up a couple of good points that I'll just pull from both of what you're saying. So, OUSD is unique. We do school-site budgeting. We also do department budgeting, central office budget. And I would often say administrative budgeting, right? Like, there's three big buckets. But OUSD is unique in the site-based budgeting process, in that there's a tension point in that budgeting process, right? Of like, one, resources are declining, because frankly, enrollment is declining, right? So back to like, how our state government sends resources to school districts is by per pupil. And not only that, it's by per pupil attendance. So that puts a tension point, too, because then if students are out for a number of different reasons, they're sick, family challenges, so on and so forth, districts are penalized essentially for that lack of that student attending. And so then that means a school site in a school district doesn't really have certainty, even after budget is passed, because there's not guaranteed that the resources they budgeted, they'll actually get if attendance goes below what they expect. So then, we're having less and less resources for a number of dynamics that are sometimes out of our control. And you're flagging that in this, in this process of these amazing volunteers of parents and educators and students, that they're having to contend with and rectify every year what to do with less resources. And often compete with their other school sites to squabble over whatever additional resources might come, whether that's everyone going for the same grants in philanthropy, or at the state, there are some one-time grants outside of the standard allocation for per-people spending. And so then it creates this division, instead of unity, around what actually is best and necessary for every school site to thrive in the district, right? So it's not, not trying to paraphrase, but just trying to make it plain for folks, because I think part of the thing is we get these media reports that are snippets of a small problem, but they don't give the real depth of what's happening, what's the tension points in the budget development process. And I think you both are highlighting what many folks just don't actually know unless you're a parent in a school site. And sometimes, even as a parent in a school site, you might not know it either. But there's something that's not happening, right? Which is a conversation about what is actually best for our students, right? And particularly for our students who need the most, who need more than the standard, you know, baseline education delivery model, right? And I think that that's important, because we know we have a high population of students with special needs. And I know there's lots of ways to, we're going to dive into that. We also know we have significant number of Black students overall who are just not served, are always at the bottom across any measure. And I'm going to say, any measurement, and if there's a measurement where they shouldn't be at the top, they're at the top, right? And then we also have school sites. Um, and then we also have school sites who are struggling with enrollment because they're in areas where frankly, children, children aren't moving or have been pushed out. Um, I'm trying to name all the big issues, right, that are underneath the, where's the money and why can't we get students served, right? And so, the budget process is always trying to figure out how to contend with this. And so, the question becomes, does the superintendent design a process that truly, um, allows people to contend with this, whether it's even in central conversations? Um, or even at the school sites, and that's been every year, different processes kind of been designed, right? That allows people to engage to some degree, but not to the, the degree that you're flagging Cynthia would be ideal, which is like, let's really get to how do we create a district where we are looking at equity and having central conversations about what that could look like across different types of school sites and scenario of school sites are dealing with. And that's deep, that's a lot.
But also is it student-centered, like it's our budget, if you look at Oakland's, but like, it seems like we're not centering students, we're centering administration, we're centering consultants.
Like, and, and you know, frankly, let's just call it what it is. The board did try to address that and unfortunately, it was used against them in a weaponized kind of way. That instead of the district really saying, well, let's have a centralized conversation about how do we get to spending less on consultants, they weaponize after-school programs in my personal opinion.
I agree.
To avoid having a deeper conversation about what is, what is contracting really looking like in the district? And how do we make sure that we are having real conversations about those being primarily directed towards students? Uh, so I think there was a misstep on the part of the administration and the board to not wanna have these centralized. That frankly are necessary, because I know one thing that always was like, my, my biggest pain point when I was on the district budget advisory committee is like, every school site has a copier lease contract. I was like, what do you mean? We have ninety-eight separate copier leases. Everyone was paying.
Results-based budgeting, site-based budgeting at its worst.
The most ridiculous thing I've ever heard. And then, and then some copiers were like ten years old. I remember one school site had a copier lease that was ti, twenty years old and the copier had never been replaced in twenty years. I was like, no, no. And so you think, you don't, because again, we can't have this centralized conversation. To your point Cynthia, then the things that actually become wasteful, don't get lifted up to the top for change. And then behavior keeps seeding in that, well, just the way we do it, so we're gonna keep doing it this way. And I would say that's also a big tension point. It's like, why do I wanna change? Adults not, I think students come into this budget process and you, you all tell me it's, it shifted. The students come in the budget process, well, let's do something different. And adults are like, ew, we can't do anything different.
The student on this SSC at Castlemont, who I'm a, I'm an SSC member of, she, I wanna give shout out to Principal Blasher, he does really, um, value her voice. And a lot of times she's saying, we need more youth voice. Well, I don't hear, I don't see other kids here, I don't see other students here. Um, we need more space and incentives for student voice to be involved. And I one hundred percent agree with her on that.
Real quick, and I, and I see, um, I'm watching Poetry Flows Bay Area, High Poetry Flows Bay Area. They, the need to slow down. Um, so I think that is a big challenge for us. So if, and, and Paco, you can completely, I think empathize with the way in which the budget um, collides with our election process, you know, every year, how boards come in at the middle of things. So, if, um, yes, I will say we are a district where there's many contracts. And sometimes those contracts are attached to particular types of local funding. You know, so, um, we have a very, um, I don't know, productive set of players in our city that, um, bring in dollars for, for specific things, you know? And then contracts are born out of that. They are one-time dollars. And, um, and I've been, I've witnessed principals going, ooh, I'm gonna use that twenty thousand dollar from X entity, you know, to create, to pay for this person to do X thing, you know? And that happens at the school level. That happened with me. That's how I came into Oakland Unified.
Yeah.
Doing some family engagement, piece-together puzzle thing, you know? So, um, so those contracts, to understand them and even how we became so contractual in terms of our money, and that's a historical conversation, you know? And, um, very much so, cause I was at International Community School when we were shifting from an employee-based after-school program to a contract-based after-school program. You know, so I know what that looks like and it's hard to unravel now, cause a lot of our funding streams work that way.
Yes.
But also, and also, not all contracts, you know, a lot of the contractual money that we see in our budget flows from sites up. They get sort of, there's a list of tons of tiny contracts.
Yes.
And some of them are special ed contracts.
Yes.
That, for things that are very difficult to find. Um, and Coriander, we discussed this in the C, in the Community Advisory Committee for Special Education, for things that have been a struggle to find, like speech therapists, and students still need the service.
Yes.
So that's a whole other difficult conversation. But can we have the conversation with the board when they're elected in the middle of a school closure, um, intensity? Um, to then, with a budget that they didn't necessarily themselves create, you know? And then you come in in January with that intensity and then you'll have literally till mid-February till you have to figure everything out, because if anybody needs to be laid off, you have a month to set that up.
Yep.
Where's the time?
Exactly.
To unpack things when our annual cycle is that fast. And then there's a, often an election in the middle of that annual cycle. So I, I'm not saying this is an impossibility, I'm just with everybody and how, how do we slow this down?
Yeah.
And, um, and also, because we are trying to manage the meager resources, how do we get more? So I'm just like, so that is not so painful and piecemeal. And, um, so, and right now in this country, we're trying to protect the little that we have.
Yes.
So, go ahead.
Super valid, but it does bring up a point, right, around the role of the board, the role of superintendent, the role of principals, right? And where the conversation, I think centrally can first happen, that you're flagging is, how can we design a process that takes these things into account, right? That ensures that we are not just rushing through what is the deadlines, right? Cause you gotta stick to the state deadlines. There's certain forms due, certain deadlines for decision-making by the board and the superintendent, right? And these are not issues that are gonna go away, right? And I always say that, like, we gonna be gray hair and they may, hopefully, they get resolved by the time we all fully gray hair. And notice I said fully, not, not the strands, okay, cause we all got strands. But you can't, you can't do no budget advocacy and not do strands. Um, I, I stand on that, listen. But I do think that, like, what you're flagging is that, hey, this system, this public education system that we cherish has flaws in it. It has flaws in the way resources are being flowing down to our students, to our school sites, to our districts, and from the state and from the federal government. It's not enough. That's the first flaw. It's never been enough. There's a lot of history about why it ain't been enough, but the basic summary of it is as soon as more black and brown and A P I folks got access to public schools, funding for public schools went down, right? And we've never come out of that dynamic, right? We're not gonna come out of it anytime soon until we build a cross-sector, cross-multi-dynamic, multicultural, multi-generational movement to, 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 to demand the resources flow the way that they need to. That movement is starting to wake up, I would offer, right? In the meantime, between time, there are these tension points that you are, as parents, that, that that I see as a, as a advocate, uh, you know, organizer across multiple systems now. And I think you're flagging like, hey, we know our students aren't getting what they need. We see the piecemealing that's happening from the school sites to the departments within the idea of having a, um, CELPA, which I'm gonna have y'all break that down in a second. Um, within the context of like serving our most vulnerable students, our students who deserve the most resources from us so that they can achieve the best educational outcomes possible, right? Um, and I think what you're, you're saying is that the process has to improve in order for us to achieve that goal. Um, and I think that that's fair for everyone to like really center on and that until we actually hold the board and the superintendent, and I'm always gonna name them both, cause they're two different decision-makers in the process, um, that, that we're not gonna see us, we're gonna see parents do the amazing advocacy on a volunteer basis to keep pushing these issues forward. So, I just wanna acknowledge that, cause I think it's super important that like you both as what I consider the O G advocates in the district, um, you are clear that there's this tension point that has to be addressed in order for us to really achieve equity for our students and to get to that student-centered budget.
CELPA, CELPA is Special Education Local Plan Area.
Yeah.
And it's basically the, the, our district, um, districts can pool their resources together to, in a special education local plan area to provide disability support services to students in different districts. Because we're so large, Oakland Unified, we're our own special education local plan area. And it should be noted that zero charter schools in our city right now are part of our special education local plan area. Um, so, and it should be noted that, um, the ridiculous, um, this imbalance between the services for students with moderate to extensive support needs um, on the district side versus the charter side. Um, and that is an expression of larger things around, and I'm, I'm just gonna be clear, a sector that wasn't designed to serve the highest needs at all.
They can.
So, they can, they're not set up to do that, just like people who believe in universal healthcare.
Charters have their own.
Yeah, and it's like, CELPA, it doesn't do what a CELPA supposed to do.
It's to draw, it's to draw charters out of our district CELPA.
And, and push a paper pro, I mean, I'll be honest, to push a bureaucratic process of, you know, fulfilling the minimum requirements. So, um, but the thing is that, um, parents get drawn to that sector and by doing so, leave behind. Um, families get drawn to that sector, leave behind, um, a lot of us. And, um, and it fragments our city, it fragments our resources, um, it imbalances our resources and our, and our general fund, our district's larger budget is then put in the position to carry more, more need. So, um, yeah, so that, we have to contend that. We are the most highly charteredized, um, district city in California.
Yes.
And I would get a lot of students, of ninth graders from charters when, um, uh, cause I taught a S D C program at Oakland Tech. Um, mostly it was moderate and it's mostly boys on the spectrum. They would come from the charter schools and some of them were traumatized because these institutions are not set up to properly support. And it, you know, I can't, it's hard to defend O U S D, sometimes it was, sometimes we're not, I mean, a lot of times we're not properly, um, prepared either. But it was even more so, uh, at the charter schools where sometimes students were punished for their disability. And then they get sent to us in the public schools. And, um, you just can see the difference in independent skills and, and what they have and how they've been supported to become an independent member of, of the community rather than just having someone there doing everything for them and not, there's not a genuine learning process. It's just not happening at charters. They're not invested. And to me, it's a civil rights issue. And I get very upset when I think about it and, and talk about it. But it, uh, the charter should be shut down for that reason alone. Like if we were centering not only youth and students, but centering our disabled community members, it's good for everyone. Everyone benefits. If we start with our most vulnerable and work our way and, you know, radiate out from there, everyone, it, it, it benefits from that. So, yeah, the charter schools are really, really awful when it comes to disability.
Yeah. And I think you, I think it's important for folks to know charter schools started as an experiment to produce areas where frankly, universities could experiment with how they deliver public education. Um, and that was their initial authorization. And over the years, it's become more and more utilized by for-profit, um, thinking folks um, under the guise of nonprofits, um, to create schools that are then more and more specialized to, more and more specialized to different, uh, maybe specialties of that we consider in education, like language or like a certain, um, you know, uh, field of study, right? Um, but I think sometimes we've forgotten that, that like the original authorization was like, let's experiment on how to improve public schools. And now it's become a very simultaneous system that frankly doesn't have and has, doesn't have a real solid plan for integration in the public education system at this juncture. And is decentralized mostly, um, as, as a way to underfunds public schools because people have the same student population, right? Um, I wanna say that, Cynthia, you have a thought to share, but as long as there are as many charter schools in Oakland, O U S D enrollment will never stabilize. I'm gonna just go on and say that. Cause people like to debate on that. It's not debatable. There's research papers. It's tit for tat, right? Because we are a per-people-funded district, just like everyone else in, uh, that's an urban school district in California. So if you have this, a finite population of students and an infinite number of schools, you're going to spread that per-people funding across an infinite number of schools. That's the facts. Um, go ahead Cynthia.
No, I just, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm watching your, your most, the one who's commenting the most in the thread. And, and, and feeling, I'm feeling like, um, pointing out, um, kinda like what solidarity means to me, even in the special ed world. That whole idea of some of us are not getting served, so we leave, you know? So, and, um, and just like disability is a very large and diverse umbrella, just like race is a very large and diverse umbrella, so is language and immigration experience and all that. We gotta get super specific about, um, who we are and how we talk, you know, in these spaces. And that's not a, a comment to you, um, Poetry Flows Bay Area. It's just the idea that even within disability, we struggle. Um, because, um, we have students who are not seen, whether you be blind or deaf or have, um, pretty, um, high mobility needs, you're a wheelchair user, you need a nurse, um, with a G I tube, or you are extremely anxious and non-speaking as an autistic person. And then that comes in a black, um, child who lives in a very low-income neighborhood and, and you're like at the bottom even of the special ed situation. So, um, yeah, special ed parents that leave for charters. Um, I wanna have a conversation with those because, um, there are many of us for, for whom that could never be an option. So, um, yeah, so I think that, and it could not be. So I think that people who leave live in a certain sort of edge of our experience where there might be a little bit of hope to somehow be included, you know? So, um, and even those, um, often find really, really hard times. I wanna recommend a book called Excluded by Choice, and I'm forgetting the author's name, of that sort of search by parents of disabled kids for a charter place that never, ever exists.
Right.
You know, so, um, so that is, um, it's something that is sold to people and then there's a rude awakening. And that is not to idealize our setup. Because when the small schools movement rolled through this city, none of those schools were for my kid. So, we, or kids like my kid. Um, we are operating in a market logic that also lives in our city, in our district, where we have like, you know, portfolio schools versus the other schools. So, um, so the, the schools of default where certain students end up. Um, so anyway, so I, I, yeah, I agree with you Paco. We gotta think about this whole school as something we shop for is really destroying us. Instead of schools, or how do we build the schools around us? You know? And there could be a narrow amount of choice for certain things that are hard to have everywhere. But schools are an expression of community. And our core setup has us crisscross in the city and disarticulating our communities. So, so, yeah, thank you for the person who mentioned Parker. That's a neighborhood that needed an anchor, you know? And all neighborhoods need an anchor. So, so, yeah, I'll just stop there. I watched what the small schools movement did to our city.
Yeah.
And I was an employee of those schools, which is, you know, and I woke up slowly because I was living the opposite story in the disability community.
I think one of the things that you're flagging that like I just want to just say is we have a challenge as multiracial folks, right? We are often told that there is some silver quick path to success in this country. And it's been over the course of our whole movement for justice in this country. Well, if we just get civil rights at this level, then we'll have the silver path. We'll have what white folks frankly have as privilege, right? That's not been proven true. And then it was, well, if we just, you know, if we just climb the 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 corporate ladder, if we just get good jobs, then that will eliminate the challenges and the barriers. Done that, still experience significant levels of oppression, right? And then I think in the eighties, let's just call it what it was. Well, we just get all our kids to have a better education and get to college, then they'll eliminate the barriers of oppression, and they'll have the American dream. And that ain't worked, right? And I think since the eight eighties, the nineties, the two thousands, and now, it's been, well, if I just pick the right school, and if I just make sure my kid has the right set of opportunities, then they will not experience the same levels of oppression that I experienced, they will have finally the American dream. And what I think you're, I just want to name that because I think these trends come to offer us a carrot that makes us believe that if we just jump through enough hoops where all of a sudden, you know, some of us get access and some of us get opportunities, that that's enough to end oppression for our generations, for our families, whatever you want to fill the, for who, in. And I think underneath the tensions that are surfacing in public education is this disunity because if you have a carrot, then there's always gonna be folks who will jump for the carrot, right? There will always be folks who are like, well, my kid can get to this carrot, so I'm gonna take the opportunity to get my kid this carrot. And it it fosters the ability, the inability for community to build, you know, yeah, one, our own infrastructure that caters and centers to our students. Number one, the very foundation of the civil rights movement, I would offer was the innate acknowledgement that we knew our kids, we knew their brilliance, we knew what they needed to be successful. And we had a hope that by getting equal access to what white kids had, that that would then give us more ability to cater to our students' need. And that theory was proven wrong, right? And so we have to figure out the ways in which we have these conversations about what have we actually gained? What have we actually gained from the ways in which we've tinkered with this public education system, first and foremost? The ways in which we've allowed the public education to give us the false idea that the carrot is worth leaving community behind? And more importantly, if we're gonna wake up in enough time, and I would offer in enough time is a real serious part that we need to be taking some, 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 some pause on slowing down and really get serious about. What happens when we have to build our own infrastructure anyway? Are we going to recreate the same systems of oppression? Because we haven't spent the time to think through, really, what does it mean to serve students who are most in need of our love, our patience, our nurturing? And what does that look like as a community, right? Because I think what you all both started off saying is, I belong to Oakland because Oakland made space for me to be belonged to. And so I do believe that as Oakland, we want these amazing schools to exist, not because of the buildings, but because of the community that they have the ability to create, because of the belonging that students come to. And I've seen students in this district, as in any other district, be like, this is my family. This is my family from my other family, right? And I think what's lost in these budget processes is how do we do that? How do we nurture the the students at the center of our purpose for existence? To have joyful learn, sense of belonging, instead of make sure that everyone's just getting paid well? Both have to exist and be true. But if you're getting paid, you're not getting outcomes and feel joy, that actually learn, then I think we have to really address, and that students feel safe. And I don't think school closures get a crack. I don't, you know, making family come to school where they have to, with less resources. I don't think, you know, frankly, some is existing and is going to move us in that direction either. It's gonna take a real systemic desire from us all to say we have to shift the way we budget, we have to shift the way we do resources, and we have to shift behavior. And we're talking about an adults-based conversation more than the students. Because I would offer, if we gave students all these problems, they could probably solve it in a good year. I have a lot of optimism around our students, right? Because they will see things flowing in ways that don't make sense. But I also know we could talk about this all day and all night. In fact, I know, I know, we can. Baby, I know, listen, there's some things I do know. We can talk about these issues all day and night. So as we kind of wrap up, I know there's a lot that we said, folks, but, you know, the budget process has some tensions in the school budget, the school district budget. Hopefully, you've learned about a couple of those tensions as we look through the lens of what does it mean to have students who are the most vulnerable and have the most needs being centered in that process? And we've talked about the tension point of school-side budgets, the need for centralized conversation around these tension points, but also what's underneath the enrollment challenges that we have a lot of charter schools, and a lot of our public schools are not getting served. We talked about a number of other issues around engagement. We talked around some of the tension points around the process itself and the deadlines, and how realistic is it to get a budget from the state in January and then have to make decisions around staffing by February? Lots to still be talked about. But any last thoughts from either of you before we wrap up?
I can, if you want to end it, I can just say that I often have conversations like this with students in the district-level committees. And there's two pieces of of of, two things that I always say. And one is, you know, if you have your school story, find the school that is most unlike you around you. And that is the school that you become a sister to. And then the other thing is we have all these categories of student experience, whether that be foster youth, whether that be newcomers, refugee, S I Lee, whether that be students who speak a particular language, whether that be careful with disabled being too general, whether that be autistic, deaf, blind, race, racial categories, whatever. So if you don't have a particular category of experience in your school, that's your focus for understanding how your school is set up. So, so those are, that's crucial to me. And all of us are none kind of public education person. I challenge myself with that. And and that's, those are the last words that I'm gonna share.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Go ahead, Cory. We can't hear you very much.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Is that better? It made me think of something Toni Morrison said in that documentary about her, about writing. As a writer, she challenged writers to write about someone that they're, that is not their experience. You know, I'm a, I'm a mixed woman, middle-aged, who, you know, has these certain privileges, trying to put yourself in the experience of someone that you would, you don't have that experience. And I want to say that the culture needs to shift, how people think about, and thank you for keep keeping pointing out Cynthia, that disability is such a broad term, that it, we lose a lot of important information and nuances. But we're still, it feels like we're still trying to get people to cut, to come into the world of what it means to be disabled and all the different facets of it. And even still, my favorite, most best-intention educators I work with, it's a, oh, that's a, that's a sped thing. Okay, that's a sped thing. And the reason I got my administrative credentials is because I saw a large need for leadership in OUSD to have the lens of disability justice. Yeah, people are still separating special education from general education when really it's we're educating our whole community. And just that idea of outside of our schools in our community, we all need to be working on our ableism. We all need to be working on shifting the culture of how we think and live with and support and become allies with and fight for people who have other abilities and learn differently and communicate differently and value all of that, yes. It's something the community needs to work on as well because that comes into our public schools. So I encourage people to come to our CAC meetings next school year.
Every second Monday.
We get very specific and all the intersectionalities there. And we are prioritizing black students who have IEPs or being, you know, kicked out of schools or prioritizing. We're getting specific, and if people could come and listen to these details. And I know it's during dinnertime on a Monday. It just, it's really great when people do pay attention and listen to what the community is saying. These are our needs. We've been saying it, and we we presented at the board meeting last Wednesday. And a lot of the things that we presented two years ago still have not been answered by our superintendent. And that is because she doesn't care. She didn't care. We do have board members today who do care. I will say that. And I hope that people also reach out to board members and talk to them directly rather than getting information from face, people posting stuff on Facebook.
Yeah.
And that's all I'll say on that.
Don't, no shade, no shade. Well, thank you both so much. Again, come to the Community Advisor Committee. It meets on Mondays. You can find a lot of information about the Community Advisor Committee, otherwise known as the CAC, as well as the board meetings on ousd.org. We at Oakland Rising are gonna do our best to start blasting out these opportunities for folks to do engagement as well because we think it's really important for folks to be part of not only the board meetings and the city council meetings, but the commissions and the committees that feed into those bodies' decisions. The next board meeting, just so that we're all aware, is June 25. And as we've all said, the last board meeting, June 11, was where the first reading of the budget as well as the local control accountability plan happened. So if you really want to know what this district is spending resources on, that would be the meeting to go back on and look at. Because I think there are many opportunities in the future where we should all be on the same page. Is the district spending the money that they said they budgeted the right way to? Lots more to be discussed. This is just the first of many conversations around the school board and what's going on in our Oakland public schools. But appreciate you all for joining. A big shout out to Cynthia, a big shout out to Cory. Thanks so much for telling us about your history, telling us about all the different ways in which you have been advocating for our students, teaching us about body-mind diversity as well, all of the amazing ways that we can honor all of our students and just hope that you all have amazing, amazing summers. And we'll have you back on at some point soon to talk a little bit more about what the CAC is advocating for in the next school year.
Thank you, Oakland Rising. This is an important work you're doing.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're most welcome. All right, everyone, have a great day. And if you ain't drank some water, go drink some water because it's summertime, forget.
All right.
Bye-bye.